Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this budget work session for the Board of Supervisors. Hello, Charles. Hello, Don. Welcome.
Gentlemen.
And I guess I'll turn it over to staff to kick us off here.
All right. Good evening. Tonight will be a presentation by Jamie Reed on the 2026 through 2030 Capital Improvements Project for both the General Fund and the Sewer Fund. Jamie will go through the presentation. If any of the board members want to ask him a question, please do so. If you want to wait till the end, and we'll dive a little deeper in any of the particular projects you have an answer or have want more information on, we can do that as well. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Jamie.
All right. Thank you. I was just going to say before we get started, I was going to wear my Baltimore Orioles tie tonight, but I didn't want to have bad luck. But if tonight doesn't go well, I'll wear my tie next Monday for good luck. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you so much for having me here. It's been a pleasure to work at the township here the past eight months. You know, I do have the responsibility of managing our funds and assets. However, I also serve to develop financial plans and strategies that will prepare the township to support future needs. Today, I'm here to discuss a critical initiative that will shape the future of our community, the Capital Improvements Plan for the years 2026 to 2030. I first want to thank Abby Kazi. Abby took multiple pictures throughout many areas of the township that included parks, projects, equipment, vehicles, buildings. You'll see them tonight in the PowerPoint presentation. She did a great job. She also assisted in designing the slides as well. Another part you'll see in the presentation is the Capital Improvements Plan document. You'll see a newly created cover page and department pages. And throughout this document, you'll see an informational page for each request for the next five years. I want to thank the directors for providing the information and pictures with each of the requests in this document. Thank you. And now I'm excited to start the presentation. The presentation today will include the following. We'll start with a capital improvements plan overview where you will hear the reasons to create such a plan. I'll then touch on the purchases we have made so far this year in 2025. We'll review the total requests for 2026 and focus on the items by each department. We will cover how those items are built into the 2026 budget by providing funding options and our recommendations. So first, why create a capital improvements plan? There are many reasons. First and foremost, it helps us with our stewardship. Here, we act as a careful manager of our resident tax dollars. It allows us to plan for economic development that is not only sustainable but also beneficial to all residents. As custodians of public resources, it's our duty to manage our capital assets responsibly and is crucial for fiscal sustainability, and this plan helps with that. A capital improvements plan is also well structured and can positively impact our bond rating. A strong bond rating translates into lower borrowing costs, which means more funds can be directed toward community projects rather than interest payments. A capital improvements plan also helps with planning ahead. We can anticipate expenses and ensure that we have the resources necessary to meet those needs without compromising our financial stability by understanding the future cash flow needs of the township. This foresight allows us to align our investments with our strategic priorities, making sure that every dollar spent contributes to a better community. Also, the plan, by creating it also creates a clear and predictable financial forecast. We can avoid any reactive emergency spending and address deferred maintenance effectively. This proactive approach helps us maintain our facilities, our infrastructure, and ensures that we remain reliable and functional for years to come. The plan is not just a numbers or projects on paper. It is a building public trust. When a residency that we are making informed strategic decisions regarding capital investments, they are more likely to support our initiatives. Transparency and accountability are key factors in fostering that trust. And then lastly, connecting our capital decisions to annual priorities is another vital aspect of this plan. By doing so, we ensure our investments are not made in isolation. We are creating a cohesive strategy that reflects our community's values and needs. This alignment helps us prioritize projects that will have the most significant impact on our residents, whether it would be enhancing recreational facilities, improving public infrastructure, or ensuring efficient wastewater treatment. So a capital plan should cover a period of five to 25 years or more. That is a Government Finance Officers Association best practice. I will tell you that when I went to the conference in June, there was a city that had a 25-year plan. I think if we had a 25-year plan, we'd have sleeping bags with us right now to go over that. But we here at Springersbury Township have a five-year plan, and I do feel that it is ideal with our size and our budget to maintain the plan at five years. You know, so after today, I'm not going to throw this plan and put it on my shelf and let dust cover it. I won't ask Dory for a post-it note and say, "Listen, Jamie, don't let dust go in this document." It's a working document. It's a living document. So with this five-year plan, we regularly make updates to the plan year after year, as you guys know. And the reason why we're here today is to talk about the plan and looking ahead year to year for the next five years. Capital improvements Plan does provide stakeholder engagement, so we are collaborating together with township supervisors, the manager, the directors of departments, and township employees. And this involves building and maintaining strong relationships to understand the needs of the township, you know, address concerns, gather input, and support each other. A capital improvements plan is a communications tool with people who have vested interests in the township. So your stakeholders, your residents, your partnering municipalities, businesses can see what is in our plan, and it does foster conversations with each other. And lastly, it's a roadmap document, you know, so we're preparing for the future. It also allows for accountability. So there's oversight, there's clear reporting, there's measurable metrics, and there's citizen engagement. It ensures that public funds are being used efficiently and projects are completed on time, on budget, with a schedule adherence, and infrastructure goals are met. The document should be updated regularly to reflect new priorities and funding realities. Before we get into what we have in store for 2026, I want to share with you kind of what we have done so far for 2025 and talk through the purchases we have made. So on this slide, you'll see that so far, we've made $1,759,148.91. That's year-to-date capital expenditures in 2025. The graph does break it down by department, so we have purchased the following items, and I think it's good to hear what we have done so far this year. Radio communications with the police department, the simulator that just happened, the Fayfield project for wastewater treatment, traffic signal projects, sidewalks, various locations. We had new computers and software upgrades through various departments, improvement signs in the parks. I think that's probably one of the most noticeable ones that I've heard from the community this year that they really noticed are signs. We made purchases for the camp security project that includes benches, signs, flagpole, and then et cetera items along with that. We did purchase a wood chipper, reflective lettering with the police department, fire equipment through yawfer, roof repairs, international truck, sanitary sewer pipelining, Wi-Fi upgrades, the Penn Oak Parks equipment, the OTT diffusers, and then updating manholes. So now you may wonder how many expenditures or projects we have left to fund for 2025. So together with the General Fund and the Sewer Fund, we anticipate about $1,030,000 that can be spent for the remainder of 2025. So with our 2026-2030 Capital Improvements Plan, there's a lot of planning and time involved. I was going to read through the first two pages of the document, but nothing really has changed there. Just the total, the year-to-date total is on there, so I'll let you guys read that at your leisure. But the summary does outline the assets, the depreciation, and the funding sources. Next, let's kind of just talk a little bit about the capital improvements planning. The first step in the process is identify our capital needs. So each department plays a crucial role in pinpointing what projects or items are necessary for them to operate efficiently. This is where kind of our collaboration begins. So we listen to each other's requests and understand the unique challenges. Once we've gathered those requests, the next steps is to prioritize these items and projects. So not all the needs can happen all at once. We're prioritizing. Next, we'll explore funding options, and also we, it's essential to identify potential funding sources, whether through grants, local taxes, or partnerships. So we understand where our resources will come from is crucial for our projects. As we progress, we also need to assess the impact of our operating budget. Each capital improvement will have operational implications, and we must be prepared for those challenges. And then lastly, we determine the timeline for each item or project. So this will allow us to set up realistic expectations and keep our community informed about when they can expect the improvements to happen. So I kind of moved ahead with my slides, but looking ahead in 2026 and beyond, we need to consider future challenges that may arise. We must acknowledge the uncertainties that can impact our plan. Now, I want to be clear, these are more general for all municipalities, not Springersbury Township specifically. But first, you know, federal grants and state grants and loans are critical sources for funding. Changes in state and federal policies can affect our ability to secure these funds, and we must be informed and agile in our approach. The next is inflation and supply chain disruptions. These factors can significantly increase project costs and delay timelines. We must anticipate these changes and adjust our budgets accordingly. That's probably one I've seen the most this year. We've ordered something, and then there's just an added increase to the cost. Regulatory changes, they can impose new requirements that may complicate our planning and execution process. We need to, we need to stay update on our future legislation. Next, you could experience workforce challenges. A shortage of skilled labor can slow down our projects and increase costs. So it's crucial that we see that companies are investing in training. Additionally, tariffs on imported materials could further strain our budgets. As we navigate these financial waters, we must also consider our contingency plans, having a solid backup strategy when sure we are prepared for unforeseen circumstances. So you know, we're looking at our cash flow. We're looking to see if something's happening, and maybe it's costing more. Do we need to push it to another year? So within this plan, it's constantly changing. We're constantly looking at that, but just, we have to keep in mind that there are some things that could be a factor if we do change things in the future. Next, in this slide is a pie chart listing our total expenditures planned for each department in the next five years. As mentioned earlier, their total dollar amount for planned expenditures for the next five years is $28,164,617. So this includes both the General Fund and the Sewer Fund. And you can look at the planned projects and expenditures. You will notice several that have been removed or moved, new ones added, or even projects that have been remaining in the plan but have moved because of their timeline, and we might have had to push some things out. So within the plan, there could be some items that, you know, you haven't seen before, old ones that moved, and then, like I said, we might have taken some ones, some things out of the plan that aren't needed anymore. So the totals by department for the 2026 requests for administration, you can see there's at $141,000. Community development, $50,000. Finance, $733,491. Finance covers the yawfer charge. Information technology, that's at $110,500. Police, $160,000. Parks and Recreation, $230,000. Public Works, $3,577,760. Wastewater Treatment, the intermunicipal expense is $859,000. And then the Springersbury Sewer portion is $2,710,000. So the total for all departments for 2026 is $8,571,751 and no cents. And then we also have on here the yawfer, the annual fire equipment contribution this year or for next year is $219,595. So here are the requests. So like I said, there's some on here that you guys have heard before, others that are brand new. Boardroom audio equipment, that's at $41,000. I know Mark Swamley had asked about that one last year, so that one's still in there, as well as the Township electronic sign. I know George had talked about that one last year as well, and that one, I believe, is we're waiting on a permit, changes with the permits. Community development, we're in the last final year of the comprehensive plan, so there's $20,000 earmarked in there to finish up that plan. And then the multi-year archiving project is at $30,000, and they're funded by the General Fund. The York Area United Fire and Rescue, this goes back to the capital purchases that's required for them. And if you go back to what Terry and Mark had done for previous, previous years here, we had scheduled out the timeline on how we want to spend that money or save that money, if you will. So for in 2024, we set aside $500,000. Twenty-five, $500,000. In 2026, an additional $500,000. And then in 2027, $590,357. So that'll cover the capital expenditures for yawfer. And I did put in the budget the $500,000 for next year. I know, I think it was Bob Cox that had a question last year about that, if that was built into the budget. That is built into the budget as well as, and that is built in the budget, that we're going to move that money to the pligot account. Pligots where we have that capital apparatus account where all these funds are going to go. And then, once we have to pay them out to yawfer, they'll get paid out at that time. And like I said before, the budget for 2026 also includes that capital contribution that's owed to yawfer, and that's $219,595. Other requests here, information technology. So we have annual computer equipment upgrades, that's at $110,500. That's funded by the General Fund and the Springersbury Capital Improvements Fund. We also have with the police department, we have annual vehicle custom fitting, it's $40,000. And then we have portable radios, that's at $120,000, and that's funded by the Capital Improvements Fund. Public Works, that's a little bit longer. So we have here, we have the sidewalks for the Giant and Lewis Plaza, $65,000. You have the Freightliner Dump Truck at $290,000. John Deere 1575 Terrain Cut Tractor at $59,000. The Leaf Vacuum Truck at $315,000. Traffic Signal Improvements, $673,760. Sidewalks and curbs, $50,000. Springersbury Park resurface and lining painting, that's $125,000. Security and lighting upgrades for Springersbury Park, that's $1,200,000. Stormwater crossings are at $475,000. Line televising is at $25,000. Stormwater rehabilitation at miscellaneous locations is at $150,000. And then your supplemental paving budget for additional pavings at $150,000. All these items are funded by the Capital Improvements Fund, the General Fund, grant funding that will go over traffic signal improvements, pedestrian sidewalk, and park security upgrades where we have grants involved. For Parks and Recreation, you're looking at the park renovations for Rockburn Park and landscaping, that's at $230,000. That's funded by the Capital Improvements Fund. You also have wastewater treatment, the intermunicipal sewer. You have a biosolid study and containment improvements at $250,000. Mill Creek Interceptor at $500,000. Secondary clarifiers upgrade at $109,000, and that is funded by the intermunicipal sewer fund reserves. Next, we have the wastewater treatment Springersbury Sewer portion. We have sewer rehabil, can't spell, rehabilitation at various locations at $150,000. You have the Yorkshire Neighborhood at $850,000. Security cameras at $60,000. East York Pump Station Valve Force Main Bypass Replacement at $1,540,000. And then you have your manhole frames and covers at $110,000. That's funded by the intermunicipal sewer fund reserves and the Springersbury Sewer Capital Improvements Fund. This next slide is a graph that breaks down the expenditures by department in 2026. I think Bob Cox, you had mentioned about the pie chart last year and how you'd like to see one. So this does break out nicely where the expenditures are. You can see Public Works has a big chunk of it, then you have wastewater treatment, and then you have the yawfer expenditures as well. Next, I want to review the cash balances we have on hand for the past five years. I think last year, Don and Charles, you brought up about cash reserve balances and kind of where we're at. So this slide here shows our capital reserves fund for the past five years and the balance we have had on hand, and this is at the beginning of each year. You can see that the balance trend has been increasing each year, you know, and that's supported by the funding we receive from the casino. All the funds received from the casino are designated to the Capital Improvements Fund. The next slide here shows the balance of reserves we have in place for the next, from the past five years for the Springersbury Sewer Fund at the beginning of each year. You can see the balance peaked in 2023 and has been decreasing since. We will be addressing this at next week's budget meeting. This slide here has the cash reserves we have in place for the intermunicipal sewer reserve fund. The reserve cash balance has stayed consistent year after year. You know, basically, we have been able to cover our expenses year over year, and that's why that's stayed consistent. Now, you're probably wondering how we are going to pay for all these items. First, out of the General Fund, that will contribute $878,491. This fund serves as the backbone of our operations, enabling us to address immediate needs and priorities. These expense items will be placed in the 2026 budget. We have earmarked $4,083,760 for the Capital Improvements Fund. This allocation is vital as it will allow us to undertake significant projects such as infrastructure upgrades and red repairs. The current savings balance remaining funds received in 2025 and 2026 will cover these expenses. The Springersbury Sewer Fund will provide $2,690,500. While these costs are not included in the sewer fund operating budget, since they are capital assets, we will have the funds to cover them. I will share next week how we will be reviewing options to generate revenue to cover these future project and equipment expenses. And then lastly, the intermunicipal, intermunicipal shared sewer fund will cover $919,000. While this fund remains healthy, we do have to proactively earmark funds to cover future expenses, as you'll see in the plan going out five years. So now, let's talk about grants. So grants are crucial for helping us balance the budget. They also help us to plan ahead for future projects with the management of our spending timelines and our cash flows. On this chart, there are three columns, and I think, Charles, I think you had brought up last year about how you'd like to see a chart with the grants. So on the left-hand column, that indicates the project and expense item. The center column indicates the amount of the grant that was awarded. I will say that each grant is different. Grants could be received by the township upfront before a project starts. With the Park Lighting and Security Upgrades Grant, we have those funds in our bank account, and we are just waiting for us to execute on that project. On the other hand, a grant could be awarded, and the township is then responsible to pay for the entire project before we get those funds. So that can happen, you know, probably for most of the projects as we put out the money and then we get reimbursed later. The right column there indicates the amount of money the township will need to pay for the item or the project in 2026. Like I said, though, a grant may be awarded, the cost that we have for the township is in that right column. We also added information at the bottom of the page here in the, in the document that has, you know, what is covered under each item. You know, if a grant is paying for that item, we'll put that into the total project cost. So in that total, in that capital improvements plan document, you will see that we did put a blurb at the bottom, just so you guys have more information as far as, you know, if a grant is helping to fund that project and if the grant cost is included in the total project cost. So that is a little bit different than what you might have seen in the past. At the bottom here, the RACP grant for the building renovation funding, that's expected in 2026. That is $3.5 million. Now, that will help, that will impact our future capital improvements planning. Also, I just want to add here, the capital improvements plan budget for 2026 does include the township receiving that RACP funds. If for some reason lightning strikes and we do not receive those funds, I will tell you, we do have the funds. We will have them on hand for these projects. With my projection, we can expect to, with my projection, we can expect to receive this year, what we'll receive this year and next year with the casino funds, along with what we have in savings, we will have everything covered if we would happen not to receive those RACP funds. And I did calculate that what we'll have left, if we don't receive that money, we'll have $1,092,470 left at the end of 2026 if we do not receive those funds. But if we do receive those funds, that helps out the budget significantly, as you guys In conclusion, I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure. I believe our five-year plan is put together very well. If you look at the pie chart for the 2026 and 2030 totals, we've done, I think, a good job of spreading out the expenditures over time. You know, I take seriously my job to make sure that we have the funds for this plan, and I will say that we do, we do have a plan in place. And I will make sure that this plan does not get dust on it, Dory. So, you know, you can give me a post-it whenever you want, but this is a working document. We'll continue to work on it, you know, as things come up. You know, we do want to make sure that we have our cash flows appropriate, you know, throughout the months and throughout the quarters and throughout the year, so we can plan ahead when we do have expenditures coming. And that's it for me, and I think I'm going to pass it over to Mark. I know he wanted to have a little bit more of a conversation on a few of the items in the plan.
Thank you, Jamie. First, was there any, to the board, was there any projects that you wanted to have a little deeper dive into?
I actually wrote down, I'd like to get a better understanding of what, where is it here, stormwater crossings. I've not heard that phrase before. What?
So those are several. So those are several pipe crossings under roadways that have failed or close to failing. And we're waiting on a few permits yet from DEP before we can put those out to bid. But First Capital Engineering has been working on those items.
Okay. And the manhole frames and covers, I assume that's for Sherman Street and Mount Zion Road?
It is not.
It's all around Danny Lane.
Really?
Are we going to make them go back and do them right?
They won't. As I said last year, PennDOT will not make their contract to go back and redo them. Their PennDOT roadways. But if you drive on Concord Road, which is a township road, and we just paved it the other week, and drive over those manholes, you would see a markedly different experience.
Somehow, I don't feel better about that.
Doesn't help you, does it?
It doesn't. I still have to weave down Mount Zion Road.
Yeah.
Especially down toward the bottom of the.
Come on, George, there's only twenty one of them.
What'd he say?
There's only twenty one of them.
There's only twenty one.
Before we close, and I'll turn.
Can I ask a quick?
Sure.
I just, I'm a little confused, though. Jamie, am I understanding that the eight point six million dollars for next year is less the two point two million in anticipated grant money? Or is that our net number after the grants have been received?
Yeah, that's our net number.
Okay. Again, I'm a little confused on, when I was looking at the, let's see if I can pull it up here. The security and lighting upgrades for Springersbury Park is listed at a million two. Are we getting a million dollar grant for that work and our actual expense is two hundred thousand? Or is the cost two million two, and we're getting a million dollars to offset about forty percent of it?
Yes, so we do have the grant on hand, so we do have those funds. The two, the one million dollar, the one point two million dollars, that's just for two thousand and twenty six. That would be a two-year project. So the remaining amount of money would be in for two thousand and twenty seven that the township would have to pay for. So we're just covering, I would say, a third of that cost.
But that's not going to hit in two thousand and twenty six. We have the million to spend in two thousand and twenty six.
Correct.
So instead of a million two, our actual net for two thousand and twenty six is two hundred thousand on that project.
Yeah, so we can pay for.
Well, I'm not, yeah.
Misunderstanding.
We got a million dollar grant. That's been in the bank. The extra on top of that million is one point two million. And that's what I want to talk.
Spread over how long? Or that's what we owe in twenty six?
That's just two years?
That's the total project.
Twenty six and twenty seven.
And it all depends on when it goes out to bid, if it would be all two thousand and twenty six or some into twenty seven.
So the total project is two point two million.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's a net number.
All right, so.
Now I understand.
That gets me a little confused, too, very similar to Bob. So if we have the money on hand for that grant, is that part of the capital funds reserves that are going to fund this project? That Jamie showed how we're pulling money out of our various funds? Or is the million dollar grant over and above in addition to the funding?
The grant amount is, the total project is two point two million. The grant takes care of one million of that.
I think Charles' question was, in the allocation out of capital funds to pay for projects, is that million dollars that we already got in that fund? Or is that separate, it's really nine points, or nine million something, that we're going to be spending? One million of it out of the bank that we put the grant money in, and the other eight million dollars out of the capital fund?
Yeah, I had the same issue.
Because the total amount of expenditures that we have for next year would include any money that we receive.
And we show on that two thousand and twenty six funding summary and sources, we show four sources for eight point six million dollars, but then we show the grants after that. So I'm trying to figure out if the grants.
Are the grants in it or not?
In it, or do they apply, are these numbers net? And it's actually higher than, you know, by two and a half million or two point two million dollars? It's actually ten point seven million.
For that project specifically, the million dollar grant is not in the total. So the total general fund capital is five million for two thousand and twenty six. If you look at the park upgrades, well, it is in there, I'm sorry. So you've got one point two million in twenty six and eight hundred thousand for that particular project in twenty seven. So it is including the grant, the, the grant funding that we already have on hand.
So I'm trying to match the funds that, so we had a picture of fund balances that I think I heard Jamie say were at the beginning of this year, that we're using, which, again, is nine months old. But we're going to be using those funds in order to fund the eight point five million dollar capital budget. So I'm just trying to match fund, okay, is it eight point five plus all our projects that are one hundred percent grant funded? Or the two one six eight, as Bob was asking? Is, help me understand that, because I think we've also had the growth in those balances over the last nine months. And so, you know, and we're going to have three more months of it, I guess. I'm trying to just match fund, how much is, are we really taking out of reserves? And how much of it is already prefunded by grants? And how much of it really has to come out of the general fund? And I think I heard a number come out, no, I didn't hear something come out of the general fund, but I'm trying to make sense of it all from that perspective. So it all balances expenditures, match either the cash flow in from the casino plus grants, and then the net would be funded by actual cash on hand. I'm looking for that grant.
Yeah, so, Charles, the eight point five, the eight million five hundred and seventy one thousand seven fifty one, that's the amount that the township is gonna, that we have to pay outside of the grants.
So then the budget is actually.
So that's a net number.
Yeah, and then the park security grant that you guys had a question about, that money is not included in the capital account, the capital reserve savings account. That is actually in the general fund in a separate account. So I just wanted to clarify that with you.
So we're looking at a gross expenditure of ten million seven forty five seven, or five eleven? Projected in twenty six, granted, you know, maybe our project slides, but is that, is that a fair interpretation of what I'm hearing? That's project plus grants.
Correct.
That's the eight five plus the grant money.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of the, some of the grants we'll have to, we would pay out first, or we have to pay for the project first and then get reimbursed later. But I think we're comfortable with what we have on here as far as, you know, projecting with our cash flow and then the savings and everything that we have in place.
But gross expenditures are going to exceed ten point seven million dollars in twenty six.
Well, I have here for the, yeah, so I have here for the security park lighting, I knew that was one that you brought up earlier. So that's a three million dollar total project. Our portion for two thousand and twenty six will be one point two million, and then two thousand and twenty seven, that's eight hundred thousand. But we're factoring in also that grant money that we're getting. So we could spend two point two million dollars in two thousand and twenty six on that project.
And what did you say the total amount of that project is?
Three million thirty thousand.
How do you get to that if it's a million two plus the eight hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a million two for this year and eight hundred for next year, which is a two million dollar project, plus the million.
Plus the million.
Okay.
I think that was one project that I know Mark and then we're going to talk about further.
Well, the other concern I had was, it looks like we're draining our.
No, go ahead, Bob.
Improvement fund reserves. Aren't they, aren't we, it says we're going to use four million dollars against two point seven million plus whatever we get from the casino this year. And we're going to use four million eighty three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars out of the capital improvement funds. So we'd be down to zero, unless I'm misunderstanding.
So this year, so we still do two quarters for casino funds for the third quarter and fourth quarter of this year. And then next year, we're factoring in all of next year.
That's where you said a million would be left over.
Yes.
Million ninety two thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, yeah, with.
That's still taking it down.
Yeah, I mean, it, like I said, will be covered if we have the RAC P money coming in next year. And we should have money left, we'll have money then left over for two thousand and twenty seven for those expenditures. But if we would not get that RAC P money, and then things are going to be very tight, you know, looking ahead to two thousand and twenty seven, two thousand and twenty eight, you know, and so forth, so.
We're looking at spending nine million dollars in two thousand and twenty seven on this sheet. It shows eight million five seventy one for this year, nine million three for next year. And we won't have any capital, well, we'll have a million dollars in the capital reserve fund. It's a concern.
But more than half of both of those numbers are sewer.
So that's something I don't understand. I never have. So the sewer funding is already covered by the municipal sewer funds?
Well, the sewer fund's broken down to two funds. So anything, basically, it's, to make a long story short, anything inside the fence at wastewater treatment facility is a shared expense. That's its own fund, and that's where our outside contributing municipalities pay for a portion of their share, plus they pay in towards to build the capital of that fund. And then the second fund within the sewer fund is Springersbury only, and that fund pays for everything sanitary sewer related outside of the fence at wastewater treatment.
So out of, what, a million five for wastewater treatment for two thousand and twenty six? We would be out of pocket, or no, I'm sorry, three million five, three million five sixty nine. Forgive my old age eyes. We, we won't be out of pocket anything because we have funds already set aside to pay those expenses.
Sewer fund, yes.
Sewer funds.
Yes. It's totally separate from the general fund.
Yeah, so the inter municipal that.
Guess having run a business, I'm wondering what I'm going to be out of pocket here. How much money do I have to reach in my pocket?
Yes.
Exactly, exactly, and I'm not seeing it yet. I'm seeing enormous numbers that pretty much are going to be covered by a lot of good things. But how do I know what the net amount is that we, is that on that summary?
Yeah, on page four of the summary of the plan.
Well, I'm looking at.
Angel, you want to bring that up? The inter municipal for next year is nine hundred and nineteen thousand. So, I mean, right now in that account, we have over nine million dollars, so that's fine. The Springersbury Sewer Fund, that's projected, well, our expenses for this plan are two million six hundred and ninety thousand five hundred. That is a fund that has less than reserves. So next week, I was going to talk about in the budget about how we're going to generate money to make sure that our sewer fund isn't losing any money, but then we have enough money to cover these expenditures. And then the Capital Improvements Fund, so what we have projected here is to pay out four million eighty three thousand seven sixty out of that fund next year. So, you know, like I said, with the remaining money that we have that we're going to get from the casino this year, what we're going to get next year will be covered, especially with the balance we have in the bank. Because right now in the bank, we have about two point eight, two point nine million dollars in there. Now, I had to factor in also what expenditures are going to be remaining for the later part of this year. So that was about five hundred and sixty thousand. So we will have the cash, we'll have the cash to, for our purchases next year, but, you know, it will run thin if for some reason we don't get that RAC P money.
Right, and the RAC P money will go right back into that account.
The Capital Improvements Plan, yeah, mm-hmm.
So what's, what's the reason for the delay on the RAC P, or is it a delay, or what's, what's, or is this an hour-long conversation?
It's the government.
I don't think they had the money, to be honest with you. That's my opinion. I think they purposely were maybe not processing things as quickly as they should to.
They were slow walking us.
Not just us, not everybody.
Everybody.
So at this point, we don't know.
Everything's been submitted. About a month ago, I received an email from the Office of Budgets, so the Commonwealth Office of Budget. They got everything and they'll review it. Everything up until this point, like a month and a half ago, we were dealing with a third-party agency that helps, they're the go-between, between the off, office. Because it's an immense amount of paperwork that had to be submitted. It was crazy. So they had to make sure all those i's were dotted and t's were crossed. That has been done. Now, the Office of Budget is reviewing it, and they'll let us know if they have any questions.
And I assume we're not going to get interest on the delay in payments?
No, sir.
And is there any political pressure that can be put on by our representatives?
I've spoken with Senator Kristen Phillips Hill's office several times. Which they did get some movement early on in the process, but that's, that's the game, I guess.
I'll just say, it's kind of disheartening to say if we get it in two thousand and twenty six. It's not a reassuring statement on behalf of our state that we don't know that we might, might not even get it next year.
I feel comfortable that we will, but who knows?
So I'd like to ask Jamie a couple different questions coming, I mean, Bob's mention of concern and maybe some of the sewer treatment plant funds not being there, and we need the RAC P. Jamie, what items on this list are absolutely mission critical? Or conversely, what items are probably not as important for us to do in twenty six, if you have to prioritize them? If we have to cut this budget back?
I think that's what Mark was going to talk about.
Well, yeah, I think, well, I, I mean, I could definitely say, I mean, I think a lot of the sewer expenses that are planned, I mean, there's probably more important than.
That's how that works.
Yeah, that, you know, we have to make sure our plant's functioning. So I would say a lot of that would have to get done. You know, and we can call, maybe, I mean, I don't know, some of the other directors, we could ask them if they have a preference on what they want to prioritize. We've tried to spread it out a little bit, you know, from year to year. You know, a lot of this is equipment. I know some of the equipment that we have on hand does need to be upgraded.
The, pretty much anything that's related to a traffic signal would have to be done because it has grant money tied to it, and the grant money agreement has a deadline. A lot of the sewer, if we're going to stay on track, would probably need to happen. A lot of the equipment, we can move it out if we needed to. But there's, the township owns a lot of equipment, so if you push it down the road at some point in time, it's, it could catch up to us, but we could. There's a lot of the public work stuff regarding equipment probably could be delayed.
Well, I'm not personally looking to. Well, I'm not personally looking to cut the budget, I'm only looking to understand the budget and, and what the sources of funding are. Is, it bothers me that we're spending eight point six million this year using four million in capital improvement funds and have a nine million dollar number for next year without the four million dollars being in that account. So that's more twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty.
And, and I guess the thought that I had was the money from the casino wasn't gonna be touched without approval. And it was more of a rainy day fund than just a
Absolutely.
keep pulling out of to cover capital costs.
Correct.
So I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that now we're at a point where we're consuming all of the casino funds. And
Almost like our, our ordinary operating budget.
Yeah.
Well, we use those funds for capital improvements because they're there.
The plan was that that, that didn't go into, I mean, it's, I know it's not technically in the general fund, but
Right.
It was, it was intended to go to the capital fund to build the capital fund, so there was less general fund earmarked to fund the capital fund.
So I guess at the end of the day, I wanna know the net growth or decline of the total that we should be bringing in from the casino, because our intent was not to spend that, but to build it up. So
Agreed.
I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I know, I know with our projections on what we receive this year, next year, we're expected to get one point eight nine four in casino funds. I mean, it's, it's risen a little bit every year, but with our projections, it's almost one point nine million. But, yeah, I mean, if, if we don't get the RACP funds, it's gonna make everything really, really tight, you know, for the following year, for twenty twenty-seven.
And we're looking at twenty-eight million over the next five years, so it's not like it's gonna go down.
Well, again, keep in mind, there's two green lines on the, the sheet. Twenty-eight million, probably more than half of that is sewer fund, which has nothing to do with the casino funding. Sewer fund's its own beast.
And has nine million dollars in there.
The shared has nine million, yes. The Springitz Berry only does not.
Mark, that raises a question for me. Number of years ago, we had that sewer study done, it was, what, thirty or forty years they looked out to say, here's the projection of when, the timing of when we need to replace certain sewer fund assets and wastewater asset. Have we been aligning with that through the years? Is that still a valid document in terms of planning, or?
It's probably less valid as time goes on than when it was first. The first, when we first did it, it dealt with a lot of the upgrades, a lot of the things that were upgraded with the B and R project back in two thousand nine and ten. So it's probably less valid than things have moved around, but it's still, it's still highlighted what we needed to do with our sanitary sewer infrastructure, our own pipelines and different things at the treatment plant. So, but as things evolve, you know, different things need replaced.
And then the other thing is, there was a newer study that we commissioned, I wanna say two years ago, which we, we haven't seen the results of, I know it's been between staff and Boucard Horn back and forth for some edits. Is there any potential capital items that may come out of that that we haven't really talked about here?
Yes, there's definitely potential discussion point. Those numbers are eye-popping.
Yeah, I would imagine.
But that's a conversation, Denny and Boucard Horn have pretty much, I, I don't wanna say wrapped it up, but they're close to the end of that. And that's the study for those that don't remember. If we're going to remove ourselves from the P A American Water Treatment Plant to former city treatment plant. So that's what that study's for, and nothing in that potential study is included in this five-year.
And I'm feeling a little more comfortable looking at Mark's information here on paper. We're calling for eight and a half million this year, nine point three next year, but then it goes down to four million, four million, and a million seven. If we could stick with those numbers in the following three years, which probably won't happen, but if we could, there wouldn't be nearly the demand for cash that there is in the next two years.
Yeah, on page four of the document, if you have that handy, like Mark had said, we kinda break it out a little bit differently this year than we did, or how it was done previously, where it was just all one running total. So you'll see, there's a general fund total, and then you'll see a sewer fund total on that document. And like you said, Bob, it does go less, it does get less. But, you know, it's just understanding where we're at with our cash flow. He's pulling it up here.
In twenty twenty-seven, Jamie, it says there's five point one two million, five point one two one million for sewer fund total. So the nine million is actually four million?
All right, here's the general fund.
Okay. So we're talking five million out of the general fund this year, four million
Five million plus three point
Yep.
five million gets you to that number.
Yep. And this one is funded already? Or partially funded?
The sewer fund's fully funded for twenty twenty-six.
And how about twenty twenty-seven?
No.
No, okay.
The inter municipal fund is the one that has nine million, so there's two different funds.
Yep.
Here's the inter municipal, and here's Springitz Berry only. Springitz Berry only is not going to have enough without raising sewer rates. And that, that'll be next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before I wanna dive into the park lighting and security project?
Go for it.
All right, Denny and, and Chief King, if you guys wanna come up. So what I wanted, I have both the chief and Denny coming up more for, so they're ready to answer any questions. So we, we have talked about the park lighting and security project already this evening. Again, that's the one, we got a million dollar grant, that million dollars has been sitting in its own bank account earning interest. So Boucard Horn and Denny, Boucard Horn designed the project. Denny had a, a lot of involvement in that project. And basically, what I wanted to talk to the board with tonight is, you already hear what the proposed or the assumed bid price is going to be. And if that concerns the board, and we'll get into the why before, if that concerns the board, now's the time to know that if we wanna pull anything out of the project, it's best to do that before we bid it. Because after we bid it, we'll never get dollar for dollar on a credit change order, we just, we won't. So I wanted to take a brief amount of time, but the board can ask as many questions as you want, to explain what the project involves and, and go from there, so you get a, an idea of what it all involves. And I, I'll kinda turn it over to Denny since he has more of the working knowledge of the plan.
Okay, everyone hear me okay? The park lighting that we have right now is twenty-five years old, and we embarked on this project to update the lighting because we were losing poles. Unfortunately, our poles now have small concrete bases, they're right at the ground. And unfortunately, when dogs go through and people walk their dogs, they urinate on the, on the poles and they rust the poles out, so more than once, we found poles laying down in the morning when we get here, thank goodness, nobody was under them when we, when they fall. So a couple of years ago, we embarked on a project which was going around and assessing all of our poles. Once we found one down, it's like, okay, we have to see how widespread this problem is. And we went through, we took all the shielding off all the poles, and there was probably ten poles that you could stick your finger through at the bottom. All right, big problem, what are we gonna do? Our project here took over, and we ended up salvaging a bunch of poles that were replaced with new poles, and we were able to replace those worse poles with better poles. But we still have the problem, and it continually, and it progresses. So we started out with, okay, we're gonna raise the poles up on concrete piers so that the dogs can't do the damage. Pole, poles on top of that, so that's gonna require new poles, new piers. And right now, everything's direct burial wire, and it's willy-nilly through the park, whichever way it was done back then. And, okay, we're gonna make this an organized situation. And we're gonna put in conduit everywhere to pull boxes and be able to pull new wire in, that's how it started. That's how the whole design started. Then, security came in to light, okay? We wanna put cameras throughout the park because we get vandalism, we can't identify who did it. And just for overall security for finding lost children during events, a good web-based camera system really is the answer. And it's the same camera system that we looked to use, and we did use it, Public Works has the beta to see how it worked. So now we need an organized way to do this. Instead of how all other camera systems look on poles, which is a box way up at the top strapped to a pole, we didn't want all, an entirely new system looking like it was a retrofit. So we came up with a new way to do it, which is traffic boxes every three hundred and some feet, well, six hundred feet. So there's not a pole that's more than three hundred feet away. So we power everything through the traffic boxes, so all the equipment, all the switches, all the fiber runs to the boxes, then CAT six runs up to the poles, so we have data at every pole. We have a one-ten circuit to every pole, we have two lighting circuits to every pole. Now, the wire won't be pulled to every pole, we had security professionals come in and tell us how many poles would, as a base, need cameras on to get license plate readers at the entrances, to get the cameras covering the vast majority of where things happen. Well, when we build this infrastructure, we wanna build it that if we change things, or if we see there's a hotspot, we can add cameras whenever we want, so every, that necessitates us to put the conduits into every pole and maybe not pull wires to it, just have pull strings in them, so we can adapt to time. And we can build for the future, so we don't have to rip up everything. Now, this price includes, I wanna move all of the conduits, so again, the willy-nilly way that they were put in the ground originally, to everything under the park pads. So under a park path, you would have a duck bank, an un, unencased duck bank. So you know your wires are always under cart paths. And if you do deviate from the cart path, which you have to at some point, there would be concrete duck banks, which is standard operating procedure for like the wastewater plant. You always do that so that you can't hurt the power if you're out there digging, you bounce off the duck bank. So trying to pull the entire park into an organized fashion like that costs money, it does. The extra conduit, everything to, to do it that way, the data system to go through, so every box has a switch in it, everybody, so we, we could, at any point, any pole could have a Wi-Fi node on it or anything else that takes internet if it needed to. But the web-based cameras are really the, the reason that everything has the ability to do it. Okay? And the other thing that raised the cost is, because we're gonna be digging up all the pads, we would get all new blacktop pads. They would just tear the pads out, put all the conduit in, put all new pads in. So, and there's also an alternate bid item for this, that once they get done cutting through all the parking lots to relay, re, repave all of those and repaint them as well, that is another item off of the capital improvements plan, if you look, it's there, but it's not in the same project, but it would be part of the project if we decide to take that. So moving the conduits under the paths and coming up with something that builds for the future is why you end up spending a bunch more money at this point.
The proposed project, sorry, Danny, I'd interrupt, also includes adding streetlight poles around the perimeter of the park where they're currently not. So currently, we only have them in front of the building here along Mount Zion Road, and then up Pleasant Valley Road, a, a short distance. This proposed project includes adding them the rest of the way around the park perimeter.
Yeah, one of our most used walking paths is the perimeter. And at night, it's pretty dark out there, so just providing security and, and lighting for everything.
Denny, I wanted to clarify a point that you said, you mentioned web-based cameras are kinda like the thing. But you also mentioned that you're running some CAT six, is that true that you'd still be using cable in this project?
The cameras themselves from the, from the dedicated, from the switch, the, we would have a loop of fiber optic going from switch to switch to switch the whole way around, there's twenty-six traffic boxes basically throughout the park in this design. In that traffic box, there would be a, a network switch. And from that network switch, then we would, we would send ethernet, let's go CAT six, up each pole. So that's the connectivity.
Okay. I got it.
Did they take a look at using wireless access points?
Wireless access points, well, we have experience with that now, because that's what the bell is, we have a wireless access point to the bell along with solar powering it, and
Well, if you're putting them, are you putting them on poles?
Putting what?
Cameras, the cameras
Yeah, the cameras will be on the poles, there'll be a mounting pad.
So if you have the wireless access points on the poles, all they need is power?
The cameras would then need, there's an add-on to them to be wireless. You either hook them up with a CAT six cable, or you hook them to a wireless adapter that mounts next to it, they're a thousand dollars a pop to be wireless, so you know, the
Wait a second, you, you, there's not, there's not a pure wireless thing that connects to a local internet?
Um, I'm sure, we have very
Yeah, so some of those, the remote access points and wireless access points, you would be able to plug the camera CAT six directly into the access point.
Right, you could.
That wouldn't require, that shouldn't require an adapter. There's already power there, you can do a power injector for a, a camera.
The not every pole's gonna have a wireless access point. What, what I was alluding, alluding to was, if we decided we wanted to add a wireless access point anywhere in the park, say we had a dark area, instead of a camera on that pole, we could put a wireless access point there. So, and again, we're not looking at putting cameras on every pole, we're actually have it pretty stripped down to get it down to, you know, the, the camera budget is three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, so that's a small portion of this. But it has good coverage, but we're probably gonna add them in the future, and we don't have to call people in to do it, it's something Public Works can do at that point. Then we can add them, like, we installed everything at Public Works, so it's not complicated to do. Once you have the account set up, which we already do.
So basically, I just, I wanted to know, you know, get the feeling from the board before, because it's ready to be bid.
Well, we have to take out, we couldn't wait any longer for the sport court lighting, basically. So we sort of went parallel, went out on our own, we found correct heads that would work and sort of designed on the fly a system that seems to work really, really well, and it's a lot cheaper, they had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for sport court lighting and poles and everything else. And we And we can do it all for around twenty thousand dollars. So we took all of the electronics out of the basketball courts because we can't get replacement parts anymore for the coin changers. We put timed push buttons in that they get fifteen minutes of light. And we replaced all of the light heads with these new LEDs that if you happen to see it at night, you'll see it's pretty darn bright. And we have not lost a single light yet. And if they were the old metal highlights, we would have probably lost four or five bulbs already. Because they do not, they heat up to the point where it shatters the glass out of them. And that's the way they've been for years. But these new ones have been bulletproof. And we've ordered enough of them now to do all of the sport courts. So hopefully, we're going to bring the price of this project down. Pretty considerable chunk there.
Denny, are the pads that, that we're replacing because we're running conduit under them actually almost at their end of their useful life or are they in pretty good shape? Could we run the conduit buried next to the paths as opposed to underneath them so that we didn't have to redo all of the paths or is that a small number?
If you're going to dig them next to the path, you're going to hurt the path is the problem.
Okay.
If you're going to put them under, then you're going to have to cut across the path. Right now, how it's designed, there's no junction boxes, no quasi boxes on the ground except for the traffic boxes. So our IT staff, our own guys can walk up, unlock the boxes open. All the electronics are directly in front of you. You don't have to get a bucket truck to get them. The only thing you need to bucket truck for is to replace the camera or whatever internet type thing you may be putting up there. So for the long term, it's much better arrangement.
What, what happens and it happens in this park? And this is when we came up with the idea of putting them un, under the path. Then you know where the wiring is. Now, it's as Denny alluded to, it haphazardly from the exist, from the original build in the early two thousands, wires just go wherever and everywhere. So if you go out and dig to put something in, it's, they're not marked. It's, it's, it can be challenging. So we came up with the idea of let's put them under the path. Then we know anything's under the path. You can't dig with a machine, you have to dig by hand. And anytime the wiring goes outside of the path, which would be more at right angles to that pole, that short little run would be concrete encased. So again, we, we can have as many questions as you want, but my, I just wanted to get a sense from the board if what the board wanted to do as far, I didn't want to surprise the board when I come to you with the bid opening. And holy smokes, I didn't know it was going to be two point two million dollars for this job. But that's the basic question. If we have it covered with the million dollar grant and the extra capital improvements fund, it's going to be a grade A project. And, but now's the time to know, hey, that's too much, we got to go back and do something else. So.
But don't we have an obligation, having accepted the grant money to go to proceed with?
Well, there is, we have to spend it, we can't ignore it.
Right.
But.
Is, is it a forty percent match or is it just?
That's a million dollars.
A million dollar contribution.
That usually doesn't happen.
Million flat dollars, Bob.
Flat dollars, that's a good thing.
Usually, usually they don't give you the money ahead of time. They gave us the money ahead of time. And it's been sitting in that singular bank account ever since.
Well, what's bothered me about that R cap money is, you know, we have a police force. Never mind, never mind.
So I guess from my perspective, when we got the grant originally, I was excited. We were able to replace our lighting. It was going to get us the LED lights. There was going to be like a, a benefit to the township in the form of lower electricity. The cost was somewhere around a million, maybe a million two is where I thought. I appreciate what Denny's done and all of the work associated with now enhancing the safety around the light poles and kind of adding the security features and the cameras to the park. I think that's all great ideas. I guess, you know, in my mind, we almost have to, my perspective, we take it as two different projects. One is the LED lighting project for the grant and the rest of it is a capital project that we want to add on for the park. And if you think of it as two separate projects like I do, what is the opportunity cost then of doing this lighting project relative to other projects slated for the park? I guess is the bigger question.
Number one, I, I don't think you can break them out because it, in the end, it would cost more. Because a lot of the commonalities with this construction would be happening at the same time. Meaning the conduit for the new poles and the new lighting, all that electric and whatnot would be under the same path. So I, I don't know that you can do them separately and not cost more to do them in the end.
So where's, I guess I'd like to see breakdown of the costs because if you run conduit for all the lighting and you have boxes and can pull wire through pretty much anytime you want, you could actually put pads there but not put the, the traffic boxes up and have it all ready to go so that at any point, we pull the trigger on putting traffic boxes, switches, pull fiber optic cable in and run that to wherever you want. I mean, that's, that's just pool boxes with conduit that's been sized appropriately.
Yeah, but you could, but the lion's share, my estimation of this project cost.
Is putting those conduit lines.
Putting all the conduits and, and then repaving the paths and all that is where the lion's share of the money's coming from.
So I imagine that a, a weatherproof traffic box for switching gear, how many of them around the?
Uh, there are twenty six, I believe.
Yeah, so right there, you're probably talking multiple thousand dollars per box. You're talking about probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the boxes.
Two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand is what, a little over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, okay. Switch gear, cameras.
Uh, that's all within the security. There's one security number, all the switches and everything are under that.
And that has to be.
What's that?
And that, and what's in security? The lighting and the?
No, 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 in the security.
Oh, that's in the two hundred thousand dollar total.
E, that's in the, let me see. I don't want to misspeak here. And of course, when I'm looking for it, I have trouble finding it. In the three hundred fifty seven thousand dollars, that's all of the fiber optic pooled. That's the switches, that's the cameras and everything going to the cameras. And the POA injectors in the poles with cameras. Because forehead cameras need a POA injector at the pole. I'm sorry, power or ethernet for everybody?
I know.
You know.
Well, I know Mark has asked us to look at, do we want to do anything before we go out to bid? Well, my biggest concern after bidding this building with an eleven point seven million dollar estimate and the bids coming in at seventeen million is what happens if we bid this three million dollar project and it comes in at five million dollars? And there's nothing that you or I can do about it. I, it's just a concern.
What you do is you throw the bids out.
I'm sorry, throw the bids out?
Which, like Mark said, you can't go back and say, we want to reduce things. I mean, we could not take the Oak Park overlays, but that's only going to be who knows how much because that's a contingent bid item. But if you came in way high like that, I would say throw the bids out altogether. Come back, regroup, look at it and bid it again. Is that another five thousand dollars to bid something? Yes, it is. Is it? But that, in the long run, that would be the cheaper option instead of trying to trim things out. Because as Mark said, you try to trim things out of an already bid project, you're going to get pennies on the dollar out.
From what I've heard so far, I'm still supportive of the project.
The security cameras, I believe, which I know this wasn't part of when we first got the million dollar grant, I believe the security cameras are needed. We got this playground that's super busy. We got events, trying to have more events. And I, I can let the chief talk to any of the security issues they've come across. I just think the security cameras are important in today's world.
I would agree. This year alone, at the Fourth of July event, we had to search for four missing children in the park. So security cameras would help immensely with that. We also had a fight down at the basketball court area. We have multiple issues at the basketball court area that security cameras would help with. The LPR, the license plate readers at the entrances and exits only help us enhance our ability to find the people that you might make off with a child. That came into sharp relief during the time. If you remember back when the rural farms incident happened and the child was stolen from that, when they, they, actually, the car was stolen with the child in it. That ended up being solved through a license plate reader that picked it up on the way to Philadelphia. If we had had that here, different story, we could have tracked that. We had no idea which way the vehicle went. So I think that with, accompanied with the fact that we, we are getting more use out of the park. I mean, we were having more events at the park. And that's witnessed by what our overtime is at the park for officers to be there as security. This year at the park, for the Fourth of July event, we had sixteen officers there. It was a busy, busy time. If you're including the officers on the street and the officers who were working the park, it was six on the street and ten in the park. I think that the security is, is paramount. That coupled with the lights as well. You know, park more lit up makes things safer for everybody. Not to mention, you know, things like we had people that run out of the mall, retail thefts and run across the park. We actually ran one right through Denny's building one day. So I wish we had the cameras back then that are there now, that would have been nice.
I would have that on my desktop, that would have been great.
So.
One of my mechanics hid behind the other one, it would have been great.
So it does happen and I, I just think that it's, it's a paramount, you know, to security.
Does this give us wifi throughout the park too?
It ha, it does not, but it has the capability. Again, as Denny alluded to, all we would need to do would be put the access points at whatever pole we wanted to have them.
Gentlemen, any other discussion?
I, I just think that hundred percent that the security improvements are critical and make this whole project worth it.
Good use of the casino money.
As long as we get cameras where you post the picture in the newspaper, do you know this person? You can actually see the person?
Yeah, not a blob, but a real.
They're pretty good.
They're very good. So again, this, I.
Person of interest good?
Mm hmm, way better than person of interest good. It can look in your soul sometimes.
That's all I needed to know. When we're ready to go out to bid with it, I'll ask for formal permission at a board meeting. But I just wanted to have that conversation now.
We actually did already get permission to bid it, but if you're going to go again, yeah, we did. We were just holding off because of the latest estimate came in was like a little mind numbing and wanted to make sure you guys had input before we did something like that.
So a lot of times we hear, oh, we got a million dollar grant, this is great, let's go do this. And I don't know that we always necessarily understand what the hidden costs are on something like this.
That's why we wanted to come before you.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have. Anything else? I guess I have to open up the floor to public comment. I don't see any publics here. And none in attendance?
Is there any other questions you have for me at all?
Gentlemen. All right, I think we're done. May adjourn, thank you.